Okay, everybody. This is a study session for the Prescott City Council. Today is November 8th. And we can start with roll call.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Kennedy.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Here.
All are present.
Well, thank you all for joining us today. I see there's a lot of interest in the two issues that we have on the study session. So, welcome, all you members of the public. And I think we're about even with the public and about even with staff. So, I guess that's a good balance. First item.
Presentation and discussion regarding destination accessibility in Enchroma colorblind glasses.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, Council. Ann Stewart, Tourism and Economic Initiatives Manager, along with my team member Christina Binkley, Tourism and Economic Initiatives Coordinator. And we're here today to just let you know about a wonderful new program that was purchased by the Bed Tax Dollars, by the Tourism Office, with support from TAC, and that is about to be launched. So, recently, 13 colorblind glasses kits were purchased from Enchroma. And Enchroma basically has developed a leading, patented-leading lens technology that allows those that are colorblind to see colors that they might not otherwise see. So, we're really excited about this program. The Tourism Office, as well as TAC, had a four-half-days of strategic planning last spring. And one of the areas identified for focus was to improve visitor access and experience. And we know that any time we can improve visitor access and experience, we're also giving resources and giving experience to our residents as well. So, this is a simple, dynamic tool that we can use for accessibility. There are some accessibility programs that we can't fully implement here because of our historic sidewalks and our geography and some of our historic buildings. So, we're really excited about this program for our visitors, for our residents. And we're going to get into some of the facts today about colorblindness. There's 13 million people who are colorblind in the USA, and how the program is going to work, and what we're going to do with these kits. So, with that, we'll get into the presentation. I introduced us, and I went over some of the accessibility areas that we're trying to identify. So, we learned about this program, the Enchroma Colorblind Program at ETSO, which is the U.S. Travel Association's yearly education and networking event. So, Christina went this year, and she learned about this program and thought that it would be a great program to implement in our destination. And with that, we're here today with support from TAC to tell you about that. And I did talk about our strategic planning. As you can see on our slide, one of the areas of our focus is to improve visitor access and experience. And this is, I always like to note that any time we are able to use Bed Tax Dollars to come back to our destination, it's also a benefit to our residents. So, this is one of those examples. It's a perfect tangible, physical example where our visitors get to use this resource, as well as our residents. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christina.
Hello, Mayor, Members of Council. Christina Binkley, Tourism and Economic Initiatives Coordinator. I'm going to dive into the facts of colorblindness and what the program's going to look like. So, 1 in 12 men are colorblind, 1 in 200 women. That means about 13 million people in the U.S. alone are affected by colorblindness. That's 350 million people worldwide. So, to colorblind people, their world view is dull, less vibrant. Some colors are muddled, washed out, or indistinguishable altogether. Blue looks purple. I had that backwards. Purple looks blue. Red seems brown. Gray seems pink. And green and yellow can look similar. Most people don't know they're colorblind until childhood, but sometimes they have to read the color descriptions. And this really affects like your interpretation of the world and just how you visually see things. This slide shows you some of our iconic tourism images. The images on the left are our standard, normal vision images. The images on the right are decolorized, as if somebody was looking at them colorblind. The Gulf picture, you can see that the grass goes from bright vibrant green, as Joe loves to see, to brown and a little muted. The picture below of Goldwater Lake, the purple is missing. The trees look like one color instead of the variety and the depth you can see in the first picture. The two pictures of Watson Lake, you lose the orange, the pinks. The picture of the sunset, you lose the pinks, the purples. It's just very eye-opening for me, as somebody who does not have colorblindness, to see the difference between images I see all the time. As we dove into this program, we learned that red and green is the most common color deficit. And as Arizona's Christmas city, the most common colors of Christmas are red and green. So, we learned that not only people cannot fully experience the destination, but they can't fully experience Christmas, our fall leaves, the amazing sunsets we get here. So, we thought this was a very important initiative for us to bring on as the Tourism Office. The Enchroma glasses let the colorblind see colors more clearly, vibrantly, distinctively. They can see art and museums for the first times, the true beauty of nature, and of course, the magic of Christmas. Now, to show you just how truly impactful this is going to be for our destination, we're going to look at what Tennessee has done with their colorblind program. It's about a three-minute video. Worthwhile. Go ahead and enjoy.
Everybody at work was saying how pretty the colors are. You don't know that you're missing it because you never saw it to begin with.
I remember being in kindergarten and like having to read the labels on the crayons.
I took a test. There were 50 pages. Normally, if you're colorblind, you miss seven or more. I missed 48.
I see the colors, and they're beautiful, and they're fluorescent, and they're great. And I'll say, "Honey, see that?" And he'll say, "What?" I wish he could see what I see.
I just wish I'd seen this all my life. Kind of like what I would imagine, the difference between here and heaven. I mean, I really feel like now I know why people come from miles and states around just to see, just to see this.
It's really important to see just how impactful color can be when you see a video like that. So, we are in what's called Phase 1 for us here at the Office of Tourism. We have purchased 52 pairs of glasses, or 13 kits, as Ann described. We've spent about $7,200 so far. That includes the glasses, but so much more. The marketing kits that'll go to all of our venues, staff how-to guides, what to expect, frequently asked questions. It has also allowed us to outfit seven venues: the Visitor Center, the Public Library, Charlotte Hall Museum, the Museum of Indigenous People, the FIPIN Museum, Western Heritage Center, and the Granite Mountain Tribute and Learning Center. Every venue is going to get a mix of adult and children's glasses, a mix of outdoor and indoor glasses. For Phase 2, we would love to expand to the art galleries, to some of our schools, to have these glasses be available for Fourth Friday Art Walks. For Phase 3, we would like to have the stationary viewfinders you saw in Tennessee's video, and we would like to be known as a colorblind-friendly destination. Partnering with Enchroma has been awesome for our destination so far. Not only us as the destination, but all of the seven stakeholders I mentioned will be listed on Enchroma's website as an accessibility partner. So, people who are familiar with the glasses or being colorblind can go and research places to go, and Prescott's going to show up very high for that. As far as Arizona goes, there's only two other museums in the state, one in Tempe, one in Mesa, that have these glasses. So, to be able to have seven venues here in Prescott where people can borrow the glasses is a phenomenal opportunity for somebody who's colorblind. Enchroma has also given us a plethora of marketing and educational materials. They're helping us with our social media outreach, a live reveal we're doing at the end of the month. We'll be able to embed a colorblind test on our new website, which lands in January. And they have an amazing affiliate program where if somebody comes here and experiences the glasses, wants to purchase a pair, they get 10% off. And then us, as the organization, we also get 15% in contributions, which we'll use to buy more glasses in the future. So, with that being said, we'll take any comments or questions. And just to be clear, you are receiving the glasses right now. You have an adult pair and a child's pair. The adult pair is the one that looks more like typical sunglasses, and the indoor child's pair is the smaller one with the blue lenses. Yes.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I remember seeing a video clip somewhere where there was a very young boy, probably maybe seven or eight years old, of course, had severe colorblindness, and was able to put these on. And it was so profound in its impact. And I think you can see this even with the adults, when they have a chance to see these viewers, and they realize the impact of their surroundings, and they realize what they've missed throughout their lives. It's almost, it's certainly impactful, but it's almost maybe painful in a way. And in Tennessee, having to find a place up on a promontory somewhere where you can look through these lenses probably is much more difficult than being able now to have a pair of glasses that you could wear all day. That really makes a huge difference for the future and their ability to adapt to that experience. I mean, I've seen similar concerns with people having cochlear implants, where they've been deaf for decades, and then they receive the gift of hearing. And some people actually say, you know, that's detrimental because they've adapted to their environment by being able to sign and lip read and things like that. So, I think the advancing of this technology is just stunning in its impact. So, we would have a total of how many pairs of glasses with this initial purchase?
The initial purchase provides 52 glasses, which has been divided up amongst the seven venues.
So, we're talking about maybe $150 per pair?
Roughly, yes. It's a little bit lower than that because we're able to purchase it as a kit. They insist that children and adult glasses be available. So, every venue gets a minimum of four glasses, which is what makes up that kit. And then the other cost was the marketing materials. We provided like cleaning kits and wipes and things to make it easy for these venues to be able to take care of and maintain the glasses.
Well, I mean, that's, when you talk about the cost per pair of glasses, that's like Panama Joe's pair of sunglasses.
Absolutely.
So, that's, I think, very affordable. I would think that even someone visiting who has a chance to wear these for the first time doesn't want to bring them back.
Yes.
So, do you have some control mechanisms that you're considering? Can you describe those?
Absolutely. Enchroma's really helped us with this loaner program, and we're going to teach all the venues how to use this system. It's a checkout system. They'll drop off their physical driver's license, and they'll sign it out. And then they'll have to return the glasses to get their driver's license back. We do anticipate we might lose a couple pairs here and there, but hopefully, all in all, the cost to replace them is pretty minimal, so.
Well, maybe if one of those propositions on the ballot today pass, everybody will have voter ID, and they'll be available to acquire one of these while they're visiting. That's, I just think that this is a terrific technology, and I think as it continues to advance, it'll be available for all those, one out of, what is it, one out of eight for the males and one out of 200 for the females?
Yes, one out of 12 men, one out of 200.
One out of 12? Yeah, so about 8%. Just terrific. I'm very excited, and I'm sure the visitors are going to be incredibly excited to be able to have this opportunity.
One of the exciting things with the Tennessee video is, on YouTube, you can see all of the comments. And I can't tell you how many comments were on there that said, "We're booking a trip. Driving seven and a half hours to see fall leaves for the first time. Thank you for doing this so I have a chance to experience what I've been missing out." And I was just in tears reading it, how impactful something that I take for granted is. And I'm excited to give people that opportunity here in Prescott.
Councilwoman, can't tell me?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the point, too, that in my construction company, I employed two carpenters for over 20 years that were both colorblind. And in the very beginning of their employment, I had to get myself used to going out because I don't think people understand in the construction industry, there's actually lumber is color-coded, then you've got marking points. And we would have to make a point when we, you know, start a job to go in, and I would have to write on the lumber, "Green board," or just so he could read that it was green on this pack. Marking paint, I had to use fluorescent because he could see the fluorescent and not the, you know, the typical orange. So, there's, it's very handicapping, even just a stop sign or a yield sign, if you didn't have the shape. You know, you couldn't just put a color on there just to stop there. It had to be written out. So, yeah, it's a handicapping thing. And I think if the teachers catch it early, there's, you know, different teaching mechanisms that they can learn to adapt to it. But it's a tough thing. But we loved him. They were both great employees. That was just the one thing. And we trained all the other employees to go in ahead of them, and anything that had to do with color, we had to mark it, you know, on the actual product. Yeah.
Mayor Protem.
Oh, I have two things. How are you going to identify visitors that are colorblind to hook them up with these glasses?
That's a great question. So, we are going to start the marketing promotion the 1st of December, after we train all the venues how to use the glasses, how to loan them out. And then Enchroma has a list of people in the area, and we're going to do a live reveal and then tons of media push. We're hoping to get almost every media outlet in Arizona to pick up this campaign so people who know they're colorblind can come and try them out, or take the test online to see if they are colorblind.
Great. And then my next question is, say a visitor tries the glasses and likes them, I suppose that they're going to be able to contact Enchroma and purchase a pair of their own so they can just use them whenever they feel like it?
That's correct. So, each time they rent the glasses, they will be given a handout. And this handout says how to purchase the glasses, how to use the glasses. They get a discount code just by typing in "Experience Prescott," and they can purchase them at any point in time.
Okay. All right. Great. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you very much. This is an exciting addition to our tourism opportunities and support. I just couldn't be more excited. I think it's going to be terrific.
We wanted to share with you all because it's a feel-good, it's a good thing, you know? I just, I have one more comment. Christina did such a good job, but I want to say to the community and to everybody that while we have said "visitor," that these are available to residents as well. So, as the residents are going to our centers, to our museums, and to the lighting, you are welcome to check them out as well. So, please keep that in mind. This is for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and thank you, Christine. This is an exciting program. How did you find out about it?
With our strategic plan, including visitor access and experience, there's a lot of ways to accomplish that. ADA accessible and wheelchair-friendly are very different topics. For an example, here in Prescott, we have ADA compliance. However, we're very hilly. We have a lot of old buildings, a lot of things that are grandfathered in, a lot of pavers. It is a huge initiative to try and make a place like Prescott wheelchair-friendly. It's a step above ADA compliant. So, that's multiple departments, that's tons of capital investment, and it's a very overwhelming project. It's not a no. Please don't hear that from me because if I can make this place wheelchair-friendly, that's the next thing we'll come talk to you about. But with that being said, when we heard about this just in passing, I was like, "I wonder what the cost would be." And it simply was like, "Oh, my gosh. It is roughly $7,000 for us to do a really good campaign and to make 50 pairs of glasses available. How could we not do that?" So, accessibility is a topic we can address on many levels, but this was the lowest-hanging fruit, if you will, the easiest topic for us to address.
Do we know of anybody, any other cities or communities that are offering this?
Tempe and Mesa are starting. They have two museums in the valley that have partnered with Enchroma. More states back east have picked up this program. Tennessee has it as a statewide initiative, but it's growing in popularity.
Well, we have much more colorful scenery to appreciate up here than, I think, Tempe or Mesa.
I'd like to think so as well.
No offense, Tempe and Mesa. Thank you again, Christine. This is great. All right. Moving to our next topic.
Discussion regarding an updated council policy on membership for city boards, commissions, and committees. And I apologize, I don't have any visually stunning or emotionally moving videos to show you all. That's a really hard act to follow, you two. So, this matter is in follow-up to the October 25th voting meeting discussion that council had with regard to an updated resolution pertaining to the council's policy for membership on boards, commissions, and committees. And just for ease of speaking, I'm going to say BCCs from now on. So, in taking into consideration council's comments and comments from the public, myself and the legal department put together two proposed draft resolutions, which were included in your packet, to address some of the concerns that council and members of the public had. So, the first item, the first resolution, rather, adds sections with a recommendation for how to address any issues that may occur with the chairperson of one of the boards, which would require a recommendation of two members of that BCC in the same manner as a chairperson making a recommendation for a member. And the other addition was a recommendation from a council liaison for the particular BCC. We did keep all of the other language very much in line with what council reviewed at the October 25th meeting, with the exception of a revision in follow-up to a suggestion by Mayor Protem Rusing, which specifically called out that it would be behavior at a meeting or at a city function, rather than the more broad language that we had in previously. The secondary draft resolution does include a code of conduct and specifically lists out that it would be, if a member recognizes that a chair, if two members recognize that a chairperson has violated the code of conduct, if the chairperson believes that a member has violated the code of conduct, or if the council liaison believes that a member has violated the code of conduct, then the recommendation would be made to council. So, we're happy to take any feedback from council, and this is the opportunity for you all to discuss which direction you prefer to go in, or if you prefer a completely different direction. Then staff can kind of change course. And we would propose bringing forward whichever version of the resolution everyone feels is appropriate at the Tuesday, November 22nd meeting. Another thing that did come up in conversation that I wanted to give as a suggestion would be to have the chairperson, the members of the BCC, or the council liaison make a suggestion for removal to the council Subcommittee on Appointments, rather than to the council as a whole. This would fall much more in line with our appointment process, wherein the city council's Subcommittee on Appointments reviews all of the applications, discusses all of that in executive session, and then makes recommendations to the balance of council for appointment. The Subcommittee could, in turn, review any recommendations or issues that members of the BCCs might have. Allow the member in question to address the Subcommittee, and then make a further recommendation to the council for potential removal of that member. So, we could also kind of revise the resolutions in that way, if you all think that's appropriate as well.
Well, I'll start off the discussion by just referencing the fact that over the course of my seven years, either on council or members of a committee, or as mayor, I've experienced some members of committees that don't attend their meetings, sometimes will really not participate, and even in some cases, not even follow their duties as a member of that committee. And then you contrast that with the really substantial interest in our Citizens Academy and the graduates of that academy that really want to get involved and participate in some of these boards and commissions. And many times, there's very few openings or opportunities for them to be able to do so. So, here you have on one side, people that really want to make a contribution and get involved in city projects and processes, and on the other side, people that take their membership on these committees very cavalierly without really providing the necessary benefits that these committees and commissions are intended to offer to the city. So, that's the challenge that this policy was formulated to try to address. Now, originally, I think there was some concern about whether this could end up with some personal animosity between members of the committees. And trying to have such a situation play out in public where a member or chairman is challenging a member or chairman, depending on what the concern was, I think having some willingness to keep focused on what it is happening within these committees and not extend it beyond the committee functions. I think there was an initial concern that maybe some activities involved with a member in the community would be somewhat detrimental. I think that still might happen, but, you know, that's part of free speech and being able to freely associate. And then also being able to... And then also being able to have some type of due process, and I think being able to have some of these challenges that might come up eventually to be presented to the commission on boards, commissions, and committees, there's an opportunity for that challenge and defense to come within that three-member board, and that allows some assessment of the legitimacy of these concerns before it eventually comes in front of the council for a decision. So I think we've made some substantial progress here from the initial proposal. So I would open it up for discussion at this point. Mayor Protam?
Thank you. I'd like to have everyone turn their attention to the packet. For me, it was page five at the top, and then at the bottom, 26. It's actually Exhibit B, Paragraph B, Roman numeral three. "When a vacancy occurs on a BCC, the chairman and/or staff liaison shall notify the city clerk who shall begin advertising for said vacancies." I'd like to include, "Or if a term expires, the board member shall be notified that they have to reapply." Because I remember in the past, I think it was on P and Z, where a term expired and the board member didn't realize it, so he didn't know he had to apply, and as a result, he was eliminated and was removed from the committee, even though he wanted to serve again. So I thought that maybe we should clarify that and give members the courtesy of an email, or a letter, or some kind of a notice that their term is expiring, and if they wish to please reapply.
So when we open up the recruitments annually in December, we do that, but we can certainly put it in there so that it's covered.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that that has a certain justification. Sometimes people who've served on committees for many years just assume that they will be reconsidered for reappointment. And again, as I just explained, with a lot of people graduating from the academies wanting to be a part of that, that assumption may not be substantiated, and I think reminding some of those members that they are required to reapply would be legitimate. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question as it relates to a recent event. Councilwoman Montoya and I serve as council liaisons for the General Plan Committee, and at our most recent meeting, there was a significant amount of time and attention to the concern that there had not been an appointment of a committee chair and vice chair in that process. And I noticed on Exhibit A, Page 24, Understanding Committee, it says that these committees are established via resolution, all terms are for a period of two years, chairman and vice chairman will be selected by the council subcommittee on appointments, which I serve on, and confirmed by the balance of council. My question is, when you have a committee like a general plan that isn't a standing committee because it only meets every 10 years for a period of two or three years, should we modify it so that that is codified for committees such as the general plan? Because it really did create confusion and angst at our last meeting that the city was directing the meetings, when in reality, the committee should have been directing the meeting. You know, instead of the, instead of staff directing the meeting, the committee should have been directing the meeting. So I just want to raise that issue because I don't see that necessarily in this wordage.
Joe, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I can briefly. I think that the General Plan Committee is unique in that it's, it is kind of a city staff function. It's a council function to receive input, and how it's done is kind of up to the city. And so in that instance, there's, not all cities have a general plan committee. Sometimes that's tied up. But having said that, we did propose possible additional language that some of these BCCs, as you see fit, can appoint their own chair and vice chair. And I think that's just one of the topics to be discussed today.
And continuing on that, your response, I saw that too, about how sometimes a committee can decide themselves to appoint their own chair or vice chair. And I think that should be consistent. I think either the subcommittee of appointment that Councilman Shishka and myself and the mayor serve on, that either we should have that role for all committees, boards and commissions, or we shouldn't. And it shouldn't be like, well, some can appoint their own vice chair or chair, and some don't. I think we should make it consistent that it's probably a decision that the subcommittee should make. That's just a suggestion that I have.
Well, I know there's some concerns when you have a newly-formed committee and you have some people that have vast experience within the city, others may have a very limited experience, and sometimes the members are a little reluctant to offer a recommendation for chairman or vice chairman without having that degree of experience.
Agreed.
So I agree. I think probably the BCC Appointment Committee is a better place to start. That way, we can take input from the membership, and I think there is a certain assumption, and certainly valid, that the council members that serve on that BCC committee should have a better understanding of who the members are and what the expectations are for a chairman or a vice chairman. But, you know, the General Plan Committee is kind of a hybrid between an ad hoc and a standing committee, even though it takes a long time to go through that process, and it's going to reoccur every 10 years, or even sometimes potentially a little bit more frequently if there's a major general planned amendment or something like that that has to be reviewed. So I think that's kind of an outlier, and we might be able to carve out a recommendation just for the General Plan Committee that would fall within the BCC, even though it's not considered a standing committee.
And I appreciate the fact that you were present that day because it was interesting because it was members of the committee that raised the issue, and there was some pushback from staff, and you stood up and you spoke to it, and then Joe arrived at the meeting. But what was interesting is when the decision was made that they would appoint an interim chair for that day, and a member of the committee nominated an individual to serve as the chair for that meeting only, and they voted, the person who was nominated voted against it. And so then they were the chair. So you look at that scenario, I mean, somebody could be appointed by the majority who doesn't want to be the chair, and that's exactly what happened in that meeting. He voted against the motion, yet he was appointed because the majority ruled.
Right, yeah, that's, that's probably proves the point.
Exactly.
Specifically than just general discussion.
And I would add, if I can, Mayor, I know that that's been a topic of conversation, obviously, in scheduling the council subcommittee on appointments meeting for you all for tomorrow, to make that selection for the chair and the vice chair. And I do think that staff was remiss in not including that verbiage in the resolution that established the General Plan Committee. And I already have a note for myself for 10 years from now. I'm not joking, I really did put it on my calendar, to ensure that that language is included in the resolution that establishes the General Plan Committee. At that time, that the subcommittee on appointments would make that selection following appointment of all of the members.
And what happens if you're not here in 10 years?
Well, hopefully, I am.
I agree. I just want to make sure that that happens.
I'll make sure that the future city clerk is aware that that needs to happen.
Well, City Clerk, I appreciate your attention to long-term strategic planning. Councilwoman Cantelme.
I lost my train of thought here. Well, getting back to that, I myself have served on probably 19 or 20 different committees over the years myself, and I can't imagine a committee without a chairman of some sort. It's the rudder for the ship. Otherwise, the ship goes all over the place. So I do think that's important. And then I'm just going to put a plug in for the code of conduct addition, only because and I do believe that the code of conduct should be signed. And the reason why is because if you ever do have any kind of a legal issue, you have some teeth in that issue that says this person signed this agreement and agrees to these limitations inside the, you know, meetings. Because, you know, personalities being what they are, sometimes you need to have a check, a check and balance in place, and this is always a good one. I've used it, not this exact one, but I've used a code of conduct in my business, and I was able to refer back to, in a couple of incidences, what the employee had signed, and just as a reminder. So anyway, that's my plug. Thank you.
Joe, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just briefly. I think that the second option that you have that allows for removal, whether it's a violation of the code of conduct as opposed to the first option, is actually a lot simpler, at least for a legal defense, because there's a signed code of conduct and the actions are based on that. But I would just ask council to give us input on that, on the code of conduct specifically as well, because some of the, there might be, within Exhibit C, you see the code of conduct, not contain all the information or types of behavior that you might want to regulate. So I think it's important, if you went that direction, also to look at the specifics of that code of conduct, to give us recommendations of what you may want changed or added there.
Yeah, I think as a general impression on this, I think having a code of conduct that every new member and every member of a board or commission accepts and acknowledges probably would lead to fewer challenges for removal, based upon some of the considerations that would generate a recommendation for removal. I think whether it's a chairman talking about a member or a member talking about a chairman, they would be referencing that code of conduct, so it'd probably reduce, in my speculation, the number of challenges that might come under this provision. Who's up next here? Mayor Protam?
Oh, well, thank you. I'd just like to point out that the General Plan Committee is a very unique committee because they're going to produce something that has to be voted on and passed by the people. So I think it's very important that since they are appointed or nominated by each one of a council member, that the person I appointed is supposed to do a job that is going to reflect the will of the people, not the will of city staff. And so I look at it as they're going to be weaving a tapestry that reflects our wonderful community, and it's something that's only done every 10 years. We need to make sure we do it right and that it gets passed by the voters. Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess one of the things that occurs to me is we don't have a code of conduct as council, and I wonder if there's not a disconnect. And I'm not against a code of conduct for BCC, so don't mistake me, but I just, and I don't know if that's even something we could countenance, if the charter kind of hemsus in there with how it's laid out. But it just seems to me, if we're going to ask the people who serve on committees and commissions to hold themselves to a certain standard, in my business, and I imagine this is true for other members of this council, I kind of, if I'm going to ask someone to take out the trash, I'm going to do it too. I'm, you know, there's nothing beneath, we're all kind of on the same playing field. So just a consideration I had.
Well, that can be presented to the Charter Review Committee for consideration, but we certainly have the ability to remove people from council. It's called an election.
Mayor, if I might address that, I would, I think that is exactly the difference. We couldn't impose a code of conduct on you that's different from what the voters do. So the code of conduct, really, when it comes to these BCCs, is a governing document for you as council to be able to judge their behavior. So they, it's an understanding of them, of what the expectations are, and for you to judge that behavior as you make certain decisions. So it is different from council, but the way you, they get there is also different.
Right. Councilman Moore?
And I think, too, the difference, perhaps, I'm sorry.
I think it was Councilman Shishka, sorry. Got so many people in line here.
You want to go ahead, Eric? Why don't you go ahead, and I'll...
Sorry, thank you. I think the difference, too, is we stand in a public setting, and we raise our right hand, and we are sworn into office, and I think that swearing-in process upholds us to standards that we're going to defend the Constitution of the United States, the state of Arizona, and the city charter that govern what we do. So in a sense, we do have a code of conduct. Just want to make that comment.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate that. Actually, Councilman Montoya took the words right out of my mouth. I feel that what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and these people need to know that we're held to the same standards that they are, but I also agree with the fact that, yes, if we don't uphold those standards, we can be unelected. But my main thing is, as far as picking the chair and vice chair, you know, I think that, on one hand, when you, when you first look at it, you go, well, gee, the committee ought to pick their vice chair and chair. But then when you look further into it, on some committees, and the General Plan Committee may be one, there are people with agendas, and there are groups that are tied together that may bully the committee, particularly the people who are new to city government and things like that, into, you know, going their way. And I think that with the BCC committee, we have to have, we're recommending to council, right, that these are our choices. And so, you know, it could be handled that way, but I think that we may be a lot more even-handed than, in that situation, the committee picking their chair and vice chair.
Very good. Councilman Moore?
Just one comment back to the code of conduct. I'm sure that what has been written is a draft, but there are a lot of grammatical errors in it, and if, I just, as I read through it, I made a lot of corrections, and so I'm hoping that before we get a final draft, that it's cleaned up and edited.
Yes, you're absolutely right. It's a draft. I used the document that Councilwoman Cantelme provided.
Okay.
At the last meeting, so, but I am happy to make as many revisions as council deems appropriate to that, and get it to where it needs to be.
Okay.
Yeah, I think at this study session, we're just trying to get some consensus of whether we want to include a code of conduct, and if we do, then we need to comb through this and make sure it's well-drafted and grammatically correct, et cetera.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Well, since we're talking about extending the code of conduct, does city staff have a code of conduct?
Of course.
Okay, just checking. Okay, thank you.
Are you back up, Connie? Councilwoman Cantelme?
Yes, and I want to just make a point. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I was on a committee once that somebody was appointed, and they rescinded the offer. So if somebody was appointed by the council and they said, no, I don't want to take it, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, is there, Joe? I mean, they can say no.
They can say no, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think even with the General Plan Committee, I think there were some initial thoughts about who would be the best house chair and vice chair, but then we thought, especially when that interim vote was made, I think it's appropriate that we poll the members to find out who is willing to be in those positions, and then the BCC could review those who are willing to serve, and then make a recommendation on who would be the, potentially, the best chair or vice chair of those committees. Are you still up, Councilman Shishka?
No, sir.
You're still blinking over here.
I'm going to have to get used to this process.
All right, so where do we want to go now? Councilman Montoya?
Mayor, I'll just say, for my input, I think a code of conduct is useful, obviously, clean up some of the grammar stuff, but I think it's a good, it's a good working start, and I think I would say that having, Councilman Moore talked about the uniformity of having the BCC board kind of decide those chairs and vice chairs. I think that makes the most sense to me, because I think, especially when, you know, we've been talking about in context of the General Plan Committee, you've got 11 people on that board. That's a lot of people to like, kind of, you know, a lot, and, and I would... And I would say, in the case of this particular General Plan Committee, a lot of pretty big personalities, and I mean that in the best possible way.
Strong personalities.
Yeah, strong personalities. And so I think, you know, having the three of you kind of put your heads together and see what feels like the best person. I put a lot of faith in the work that you, the three of you, you know, Eric and Steve put into looking at those assignments. So I would say the consistency there makes sense to me.
Thank you. We have a public comment, I think.
We do. Ralph Hess.
Thank you. I'm Ralph Hess, Prescott, Arizona. I attended that General Plan Committee meeting that you've been discussing. And during the last study session on this issue, I was advocating that the committees' chairs and vice chairs or co-chairs be selected by a vote of the committee members. And I explained my reasons why I thought that was a good idea. I still think it's a good idea and I advocate that that be done. That's not a reflection on the committee that does appointments. I think they're very qualified to do that as well, but because of the committee, members also are qualified to do that. And I think it would develop cohesiveness, as I said before, among the committee members to do so. With respect to what happened at the General Plan Committee, it could have been done better. It was kind of done on the fly. I agree that that could have been solved by just saying, as the mayor pointed out, who's interested in doing, having nominations before having a motion to appoint the temporary chair. But, and Robert's Rules of Order actually provides for that. So, I mean, Rule 27 of the Robert's Rules of Orders provides for the process for selecting a chair and a vice chair. And I understand that Robert's Rules of Order is subject to decisions of council, code, law, whatever you want to do to supersede that, you're, of course, empowered to do. I just wanted to point out that there is a process available if you decided to take that alternative and suggest that allow committees to select their own chair and vice chair. So, and it could have been very, as I said, could have been better handled at the General Plan Committee. As for Exhibit B, I really, I hadn't planned to make any comments, so I don't have that with me, so I can't reference the exact paragraphs. But you have a paragraph where certain actions can be taken by the chair. Then there's the following paragraph where certain actions can be taken by two committee or BCC members. And the only observation I have, it's not a big deal, is do you need the one with the chair? If two members are able to take the action that's available to the chair or to the two members, you could just let two members do it because the chair is a member. So that would be an option. And there was a little language issue I had when the draft was changed from the member may have the opportunity to appear before council, it's turned to shall be able to go before a council. There's a phrase afterward that suggests that the council, if it goes back to the shall, shall vote to remove the member. And I think it would be better to maybe word that, that council shall have the opportunity to decide whether to remove the member or not.
This is a majority.
Right.
Majority of council may.
That's just a wordsmithing issue. So that's all I, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ralph. I'm sure with your long legal experience, those wordsmithings are very important. I appreciate your input. So I think.
I do have one on hand in the Zoom, Mayor. Deborah Thalassidis.
Yes, hi, am I on?
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I was looking for something else, and on the In the Cities website, there's a rather lengthy document that was written in 2017. That's the Code of Conduct for board and commission members. And I didn't know if anyone was aware of it or if it was ever adopted. I think Mr. Shishka might have been the only person on council at the time, but that might be a starting place to look for the Code of Conduct, is that existing manual that someone's already written.
Interesting.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, I certainly agree that if we move forward with accepting a Code of Conduct, then we should compare it to the Code of Conduct that's currently published on the city website and make sure that there's no specific conflicts or, you know, whether the recommended future Code of Conduct would supersede whatever is on there.
Replace it.
Right now. So I think at this point, we can try to decide how we proceed. If I assess the council, well, I think we do want to proceed with this document and be able to perhaps add that one recommendation for notification of members prior to the expiration of their term. We also would want to proceed with analyzing and recommending a Code of Conduct to be enacted and incorporated and referenced in this policy. So I think if there's any other recommendations for amendments or editing of this policy, now's the time to do it.
Councilman Moore, I did make a note, and I gathered based on council comments, the consensus is generally to have the council subcommittee on appointments uniformly make the recommendations related to chair and co-chair for the BCCs. Is that accurate? So we would have that language in the resolution?
I agree. I think that's a very reasonable way to have some due process without having to have, if you call it that, a trial in front of the council, in front of the public at large. There may be some, you know, personality issues that might come up that could be resolved within that committee of BCC appointments and reviews and not ever having to come to the council for a final resolution. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you were speaking to what I was just going to speak to. She was talking about the appointment process and I was going to speak to the process of removal, that that also should come before our board appointment, before it comes to council. So I think that should be included as well. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protem.
To me, the question is, should the committee itself appoint their own chair and vice chair or should it be left up to the subcommittee of appointments? And I feel that the committee itself should appoint their own chair and sub-chair.
Well, I think this policy recommends the opposite. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I especially appreciated Councilman Shishka's perspective, which I hadn't thought of, that sometimes when you have a committee of individuals, you could have a group of individuals that are maybe somewhat like-minded and might have an agenda, and they could use their influence to try to steer the committee in a direction that would meet their personal mission or purpose. Whereas if we give the governing ability to appoint to the subcommittee on appointment, then maybe we could thwart that. So I think it would be better if it was appointed at the council level and not within the committee. I just think that's a safeguard.
Yeah, I think the concern about having the committee itself make that decision will be considered when members are polled for their interest. And if those members who do express an interest in wanting to do it, then there's a second step of review through the BCC group.
So Mayor, I just want to clarify. We don't generally poll members regarding their interests. So the way that it's been done, because this policy has been in effect, this, the previous resolution actually did state that chair and vice chair were selected by the council subcommittee on appointments. There are a couple of exceptions. For example, the Industrial Authority, Industrial Development Authority Board, which is a statutorily required board. Part of the statute referencing that board allows that board to select their own president rather than chair. There are a couple of boards with that same scenario. However, generally speaking, I would say with the exception of maybe three, all of the chairs and vice chairs are selected by the council subcommittee on appointments unless the establishing resolution dictates otherwise. So what we would do is uniformly state in this resolution that the council subcommittee on appointments makes those recommendations. And I'd add that historically, those appointments for chair and vice chair are made when the council subcommittee on appointments gets together on its annual review, when we have all of the terms that are going to be concluding, and makes not only the recommendations for appointments, but also the recommendations for the chair and vice chair. So oftentimes, you're going to be having new members. We don't know who those new members are. We're not going to be polling people to see if they have an interest in serving in chair or vice chair. We could certainly modify the application form that we put out on the city website for an applicant to make a selection if they have an interest. We actually now request that they give us their top three boards that they would like to serve on. We could also have an option on there for them to select, you know, check a box if you have an interest in serving as a chair or vice chair, so that when the subcommittee is making the reviews of those applications, they have a little bit more information with regard to that. But I don't know that, you know, obviously, the General Plan Committee is, as we've said, is sort of its own animal, but regularly kind of having the city clerk's office poll members to see if they'd be interested in serving as chair and vice chair, I don't know that that would work with the way that our process is done, but perhaps something in addition to that on the application would be appropriate.
Yeah, I think having the application have an option on there is almost the equivalent of that, without having to have the city clerk polling the members of 27 boards, commissions and committees. If I'm kind of reading your concern there. So I think that would accomplish what we are hoping to do, because I wouldn't want to have the BCC board select a chairman and then have that chairman say, I don't want to do this.
Yeah. And I can't think of a time that that's happened in the last four years at least, but we'll add that to the application.
Councilman Montoya.
I just, you know, talking about this, the role of a chair, I talked to Michael, the city manager, about this. I think in some ways, being a chair of a committee is kind of, it's glamorous in title and that's about it in some ways, because I think if you're chairing a commission or a committee, your job is to make sure that people are following kind of along and, you know, you're keeping things running on topic. In some way, it kind of takes away your ability to contribute the specific items you want to. So I think that's why the idea of having people specify the interest, if for no other reason, it might give you an indication that they have some experience doing that. And I think that's pretty useful, because I think if you have someone who's just kind of de facto appointed the chair and they're, they've never really done that before, they might not really be that effective at doing it. So I think the idea of, you know, I guess, I want to make two points. The first is that I think being a chair, again, not the most powerful position on a committee, in my opinion. But also, I would say that knowing that someone's willing to, because if they know what that involves, you know, running the agenda, making sure things are staying on track, it's work. I mean, I've been chair on committees before and it's not, again, my experience is, I'm much happier when I'm not a chair on the committee personally. So that's just the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick point. Sometimes what happens in the committees, I do see the, you know, the thought process behind letting the committee pick their own chairman. But you neutralize the committee, I think, in a good way when you allow the council member liaison to do the picking, because there's two people that want to be chairman. And then all of a sudden, you've, right off the bat, created some tension. This way, I think that, you know, you can put a lot of that off onto the.
An arm's length.
Yeah. Off to the council representatives. So I think I would lean a little bit more towards that, especially right in the beginning when you do have a lot of strong personalities, because everybody can't be the chairman.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and make this my last comment. I think we've discussed this in great depth, but I just want to say that I totally agree with Sarah's idea to maybe put that on the form, because it is not uncommon for the mayor and Councilman Shishka and I to, when we're reviewing this list, we'll have 27 applicants that want to be on the same board. And we have to read every application, and that's just for one board or committee or commission. We've got 27 applicants and sometimes none of us know who any, we don't know who some of those individuals are. We know many of the individuals, but sometimes there's new people have moved to town, we don't know who they are, so it's helpful to maybe have additional information. If they, like Councilman Montoya said, if they previously served on boards, if they've been committee chairs, that would be very helpful information in that selection process.
Mayor Protem.
Oh, I would just like to go back to the, how important it is to have a committee chairman, because that committee chairman is necessary in coming up with an agenda to move things forward for every meeting, to work with city staff and come up with an agenda so that the task moves forward. Thank you.
The staff actually sets the agendas for the BCCs, not the boards.
Oh.
Yeah, who knows? We might even put together a chairman training class.
Could do that.
So chairs and vice chairs will understand how best to utilize Robert's rules and be able to have an efficient functioning committee that's achieving the goals that it was intended to be created for. Councilwoman Cantelme, did you have another question?
No, sorry about that.
Okay, so I think we understand that we're going to move forward with the creation of this policy. City Clerk, you have a couple of modifications, I think you've been directed to have. And then we'll also take a look at the Code of Conduct and revise that and review it to make sure it's well crafted. And then we'll come back and probably vote on it, I believe, at council.
Yeah, that's the desire of council. We can make the modifications that we've discussed today and then I can bring it forward. For a vote, we can have it on the regular agenda so that there's some discussion in case there's any additional revisions that you all would like for me to make, but outside of that, I think we're good.
Yeah, there might be some additional Code of Conduct concerns when we draft that particular part of it. And we certainly have the option to adopt whatever comes forward or if it turns out that there's some amendments, we can amend it before we vote it in. And if it turns out that there's something more substantial, we can always postpone it for another review before the Code of Conduct is actually adopted. All right, anything further? Any other public comments, concerns?
I don't have anything else, Mayor.
No, and then this study session is adjourned.